I will call to order the meeting of the Rockdale Planning and Zoning Commission of Tuesday, October the seventh, two thousand and twenty five. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Ratliff.
Here.
Commissioner Miles.
Here.
Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Houston.
Here.
Commissioner Higdon.
Here.
Our council liaison, Daniel Willey.
So we do have a quorum, we'll move on to pledge of allegiance slash invocation, hang on, put in one more.
Typically one thirty by the cell phone. Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
If you would bow your heads with me for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here on this fine Tuesday to discuss topics that are throughout our city to better our community. One day at a time, ask you to help us guide us through this process, to make decisions that are willing to your will. And to watch or protect each and every one of our citizens in just narrow prayer, amen.
Do we have any citizens communications?
No, sir.
We're gonna go on to presentation, receive a presentation from the city staff regarding the September city council meeting.
Okay, this was a quite busy council meeting as far as my department was concerned, I'll try to be pretty brief with it. A new flood damage prevention ordinance was adopted, it was very similar to our old one, that there was some minor changes in that. In the previous one that was updated, I believe last time in the nineties, it had the mayor as the authoritarian body to sign off on floodplain. Permits, which is, since I've been here has not, that is not what has been happening, it was either the city manager or myself that would do that. It was Barbara, since Barbara has left, it's now me, as your floodplain does it, they call them the. I can't remember the official title, it's essentially the responsible party for the floodplain. And so now I just changed the ordinance to where my position title signs off on that, so if I'm long gone in five years, you don't have to update it, it'd still be that same person unless you choose for it to be somebody else. And then we also.
There's no anything coming from the state as far as designated floodplains, we still don't have.
Well, I mean, so we have that really old FEMA map from seventy one, I believe, it's somewhere in the seventies. They have a new online tool that they're asking communities to use, that is a floodplain estimator. And it's, it's an online website, I can send it to whoever's interested. That's now actually been added to this ordinance as a reference, if you don't have anything else to reference, you would reference that. We put in standards for RV parks that didn't exist. And then we've now required the base elevation to be two foot instead of one foot. And the reason for that is for a grant that we're going for through the glow, if you remember, we talked about a zone zoning ordinance rewrite potential. That would be completely funded by the state, no city match, they require two foot, so we've went ahead and made that change because we're now applying for that. That's about it for that ordinance, most of it remained the same, it's a fairly lengthy ordinance. Other items, we did receive two alley abandonment requests, this commission didn't see it, but I thought you'd be interested in it, they were both denied. Council feels that it wasn't, as the city's growing currently, that there's not a need to give up alleys at the moment. Whether there's utilities in them or not, in this case neither one of them had utilities in it. And the last one that's really pertaining to you guys, that you may want to know is, we awarded. A bid or contract for cleanup services for code enforcement, we've already used them for three properties. One at seven six nine green, one on five thirteen college, and then the other at five ten east, four ten east fifth. So, we're now using them as, when you see in those reports, some of those remain open for quite a while in court. At a certain point, once they can't, they've received their appearance notice, still haven't appeared, they get a warrant, where they're gonna start abating their properties for them and billing them. With that, that's the presentation from council, unless you have any questions.
Have we lost the sidewalk cleanup crew?
We, we lost those quite a while ago, now it's our own gentleman that maintain that at their availability, it's no longer contracted out. Our guys, the public works crew maintains them.
Any questions? Thank you. Brings us down to action items, we review and approve the minutes from the meeting on September second, two thousand and twenty five. That'll be under your first tab. Motion made to approve the minutes.
Bed second.
Have a second. Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, right hand. Motion made, seconded, and carries. Oh, boy, sorry guys, I've got a little froggy in my throat. Conduct a workshop to interview potential candidates for the planning and zoning commission for a term expiring on. Two twenty six.
Okay, the candidate sent us an email here recently that they could not make it to this meeting. We've reached out to ask if they're interested in making another meeting, or if they're revoking their application. But in the meantime, you've been asking for a new matrix of how you score them, so I've tried to come up with something a little bit better for you guys. If you'll flip over in your packet, I have it on the back of the applicant, on the back page of that is the scoring matrix that you'll see. Should be titled P and Z scoring matrix. Yes. So, in that I have two sections, if you remember, we asked about four questions last time, and they were all pretty much qualifying answers, if you didn't meet them, you weren't able to serve. So what I've done is, in the bold box to the left is the, essentially what the question would be, I've given your commissioner, your chairman. Questions to ask that would be pertaining to these questions, so he has that sheet. But in those questions, you know, are you a citizen and qualified voter? We try to put parameters on if length of residency matters to you, that the longer the qualified voter they are, the more points they would get essentially. Same with government experience, if they have any, the more experience they have would be the more points they would receive from you, but it's something that's measurable. And that's the first section, so it works with the planning experience, if they have any, if they have any development experience, if they attend any meetings, how many do they meet? That would be how many points they get. And then if there, how many different organizations slash community involvement activities do they service themselves in? Now, to even add a little bit to that, to have some discretionary items in there, I put a personal scoring section. Where you would, these aren't gonna be questions that you necessarily ask, some of them you might, might hint towards them. But their willingness to serve, you know, how do you feel how willing they are to serve your board and the surrounding community? What was their professionalism during their interview like to you? Maybe they give you personal experiences that seem that they would apply to the board, that doesn't fit the questions above. So maybe you give them a high score on the, their personal experience. Maybe they have a great understanding of government, but maybe they just haven't done anything pertaining to this board, so you can give them a high score for governmental experience. And then just overall rating after that, just to catch all of what do you think about them? If they're outstanding, you'd give them the best score, and then it would just go lower from there. Reason I'm talking about this with you guys is I wanted your feedback, if that's something that you think would work as far as scoring candidates, if it's fair. If there's something you want removed, added to that.
Before we get into discussion over that. Walk, walk me through this, how do you envision this going down?
What I would.
In as much as, do we just circle a number and then we tally it, or?
You circle the number, you don't have to tally it at the bottom, I'll count them up for you guys. But what you do is you put your name, because we need to know which, that, that way we're not getting you, two of your scores to the same applicant, that you'd put your name, you'd put who you're interviewing. And then you'll circle what applies, and then myself or Shanna would take that, we would tabulate that for you guys. Then at your next meeting, just as we do now, you would recommend someone to the city council with their scores. We would give the council their, these scoring sheets so they can see. How they rated, why.
That'll be at the next meeting. No longer them waiting in the room.
That's right, I mean.
That's awkward.
You can keep doing the interviews how you do it, or you can, that's your choice, but as far as, they won't, at the meeting that they interview, you won't necessarily tell them if you're recommending them or not, because you had to tabulate those scores. They'll find out from ourselves when we tabulate those scores and send them on to city council. We can bring it to the next meeting, or we can say, you know, this was your scores in an email. And then maybe you just reach out individually saying, you know, thumbs up, or if you have a disagreement, we can talk about it at the next meeting. That's up to you guys how you want to handle that, how quickly you want them to turn around to council.
Okay, so that's kind of the how. Are there any questions on what we want on this, any changes?
I really like the idea of having the two sections, I like that a lot. But even though it's been on there, can you define for us, what would, how would you define planning experience and development experience?
So, planning experience, as far as how I term the question would be. Have they serviced their community in any planning aspect, as in, have they done any comp planning, as maybe they were a part of the board? That met to discuss the key stakeholders of what your comp plan was gonna be in any community? Do they have any planning experience in a job potentially? That's what I more mean by that, the development experience is more of your building side. Have they done anything with permits before, have they been in charge of a project, or with the project of some sort of development coming in a community? Maybe they worked construction, so they have that development experience, but they don't see the planning side of that, of what happened before to get the construction there. Was more the differentiation.
What about if they had a home built, would that be considered anything to development or?
That would be how you would rate it, you know, that is development. It depends on what the board wants, if you want it more of a personal kind of question, where they've developed their own property, so they have some experience in a residential aspect. Or do you want the question to mean more of a commercial aspect of surrounding members? Having something planned and developed.
On the smaller side, but I was just trying to see if that was part of it too.
It, it could, it could, you know, that, that is kind of the gray area with the question, which is kind of intentionally.
Let me throw you a left-handed screwball. If they're a level five master planner on Game of Thrones, does, does that qualify as planning?
Planning in the terms that I mean it to be would be like a certified planner, that they deal with plating world, they deal with state law. They deal with the whole nine yards of it. But planning is a subjective term to some, so you know, they could have planning experience for a business. That maybe their, their planning background comes from building a business from the ground up, that could give them some points in the planning world.
Questions? Suggestions, is there something you want to see on here added to this?
Well, what I'll ask, Shanna brought up a good point, you have some questions, if you'd read them out to the board, see if you guys agree with the questions, because that might answer some of your questions of where I'm going with this.
Thank you.
And if you have, if you want to add questions, remove questions, amend questions, this is the time to do it. So it should be in your packet, it should be a word document, or it should be to the side.
Is this universal enough to use in the other?
It could be.
Departments?
You would, you would change some of the questions, some other departments wouldn't care if they had planning experience like we do, because you're the planning and zoning board, but I mean, it's interchangeable.
And those are in our packet?
Doug should be the only one with that. Because he, he would be the one asking. When the interview actually happens, what we envisioned is you're asking the questions. And then if there's a point in the interview after all of that, if somebody else wants to ask questions, more than welcome to, but we just wanted to write something down that came from your chair.
And that's a good question, because if I'm not here, you would get that.
Right, yeah, essentially that, if we ever have an interview, we'll print out those questions again, and we'll give it to you, or we'll give it to Joan, if Joan's filling your spot. Or if you're both out, then whoever's next in line will get the questions to read.
I'm glad that you explained what you thought the planning experience meant, so a lot of business people, such myself, will do a master plan. So how would you rate that, if it's not a city plan, but say for your business?
I would give them some points, I mean, if anybody's gone through a planning process, they're all similar, whether it's for municipal government or for private business, it's, it's a similar process.
Is that where we would probably make a note down in the comment section? I gave a five on planning because they built.
If you want to add a comment, you can, that's what the comment section's for, if there's something that you felt that they scored great on. You can make a note of why you thought that way, or maybe they scored low on something, you know, because planning, you know. Maybe municipal government planning means more to me, but that's also because it's my job, but someone like Joan that runs a business, a very successful business. Someone that comes up and says, you know, I had a master plan to run this business, now it's successful for five years, that's gonna mean a lot to Joan, so I mean, it's still subjective at the top. It's just not as subjective as the bottom is intentionally, but there's still room for you to score how you feel.
I, I think this is more helpful, or more. It's an improvement over what we started with, where we would just scratch numbers on a piece of paper or whatever. So I, I see this as an improvement personally. I, I appreciate the hard work y'all put into it, this is, somebody thought, somebody thought on this one, y'all, so.
We spent a morning together discussing this.
Oh, the brain trust.
And we can revisit it after we use it.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those, if, once we go through a couple of interviews, you'll know if you like it or not, it's, it's a living document, you know, it can change as needed. But this is something that we came up with. If you want to read the questions off, to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the questions or anything that's added, that's the part we struggled the most with is what to ask.
Charles, y'all, do you want him to read them out?
I don't have them, you have them.
Well, I didn't bring them with me.
And we can revisit it after we use it.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those, if, once we go through a couple of interviews, you'll know if you like it or not, it's, it's a living document, you know, it can change as needed. But this is something that we came up with. If you want to read the questions off, to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the questions or anything that's added, that's the part we struggled the most with is what to ask.
Charles, y'all, do you want him to read them out?
I don't have them, you have them.
Well, I didn't bring them with me. Oh, this, this packet. Question number one, how long have you been a citizen of Rockdale, are you a qualified voter? Question two, do you have any government experience, if so, how long? Do you have any planning experience, if so, how long? Do you have any development experience, if so, how long? Have you attended any city council or other city board meetings, if so, how many? Describe your community involvement, such as community events, boards, or volunteering, how many? Are you available to attend a regularly set meeting, first and third Tuesdays of each month at one thirty? Why are you interested in the planning commission? What are good characteristics of a good planning commissioner? Could you describe your work experience? Do you have any experience with the public sector? If not, do you have a good understanding of the public sector? Is there anything else you would like to share with the board? Those are twelve questions.
Could you add like, explain on government planning and development? Like after you ask a question? So they can give like details of what they think or what they do that means government or development to them? Or planning to them, and experience, just to see what.
Ask specifics.
Because they have, they might have a different mindset or aspect of planning, that we don't, we haven't recognized and realized that, okay, this is good.
Well, this is a living document, we've changed quite a bit from our very first matrix that was created, and as we go, we're.
Yeah, we can add that to the, please explain at the end of the question, is what Commissioner Miles is saying, and we can add that. Any, anything that we missed, does that catch it all, what you think you need to know about the applicant? Because as you, those questions are answered, that will hit most of your scoring matrix, but of course, if they say something that you're intrigued about, you can always ask them something else on top of that. We just wanted to provide some guiding questions to make sure that you at least hit all of your scoring, so you can fairly score.
And the reason why I said, asked to add explain is because I had the same question y'all had, when I read it at home. So if we have the same question, then they might be, so get them to explain more of what they think it means, you know.
So if they say that, yes, I've had planning experience, well, tell us about that.
Tell us about, there you go. So that they'll know that they can read more into it.
Right, because you know, yeah, you, I agree, because they might say they have planning experience and they, they might not, they might, they might, it might just be a yes.
Right, right.
You know, you never know. So, yes, to explain is, that is good.
Plan is Doug's birthday party, yeah.
Yeah, that wouldn't count.
No. No.
Moving right along, any further questions regarding this matrix?
I think y'all, I like it.
Well, we'll go through it and we'll see how it works, and then we'll make changes from there, but it's at least a good starting point, a lot better starting point than we gave you last time.
Yeah.
I agree. All right, then we're gonna move on to action item number four, receive the monthly code enforcement report.
Okay, so this is the last one for the fiscal year, if you can recall, the city goes through the fiscal year of October first to September thirtieth, so this will be your last report. We'll talk about the numbers, and then we'll talk about the future layout of the report of what you want to see. First, for the year, we had fifty one total trash cases, two hundred and forty five high grass cases, and then thirty miscellaneous cases. Again, that can be anything from trees overhanging in the road, or not pulling proper permits, holes in the roof, siding issues. Smaller items that aren't listed enough separately to tell you about it, other than put it in the miscellaneous category. In that breakdown, we've completed two hundred and ninety five of those cases, four remain open in the court. And then twenty seven are still open due to, they're allowed to have up to thirty days. It's usually twenty days, if they call, we'll give them up to thirty days from the day the notice is sent to get their grass, or clean up their trash, or whatever the violation is.
I've got a question about prioritizing. I've never talked to you about it, this may not be the place to talk about it, but unsightly grass versus a hazard, fire hazard, and living conditions. Is there a rating for that, or is it, it's all just considered a violation?
Well, the way that we currently operate is, there's, to answer the question of what I think you're asking, there are worse violations than other violations. But there's also a workload capacity management that has to happen, because usually with those worst cases, I'll use substandard as a great example. Substandard structures are your worst violations to have, because they're the most dangerous violations to have. But those are also the violations that take up a lot more time than other violations will take up. So you have to manage that time of, how many substandard structures can we handle while we handle the citywide high grass and trash violations at the same time? And so that's a balancing act of, you know, maybe, we're about to come up into the months where high grass slows down significantly. And those are the months that will pick up other violations like substandard structures again, and really ramp those up to get those cleaned up to the best of our abilities, is what I think you're asking.
Yeah, right on.
And also, we had a lot of rain this summer.
Yes, we had a long high grass season last year, that I didn't think this year would get close to, and it felt like it was longer than last year's high grass season. So we're finally starting to see not as many high grass cases in the month of October.
Can you give us an example of what maybe a court complaint is, or?
So, what a court complaint is, is when somebody does not comply with a violation, it's, it's called a city ordinance violation. And so you have to cite the city ordinance that they're violating, so your city has adopted that there's high grass limits that you allow, there's trash and debris requirements. And then you adopt the property maintenance code, which is a lot of your miscellaneous violations. You submit that to the court, listing what specific ordinance they have violated, with documentation of the violation. And then the court will handle that from there, as far as requiring the applicant, or the defendant to come in, and they had to make a plea. Whether they're guilty, not guilty, or it's gonna be a no contest, and then from there, they'll either be set for a trial, or they will get a plan in place to get this cleaned up, according to the judge.
And for the new members, I'll just do a quick explanation, we burdened Ben with these reports, because we were looking to see if we needed to tweak some of our ordinances. And, and he, this is hard data, and he can say, hey, I've been having trouble with this ordinance, and that.
Feedback is great.
Yeah, I, you know, really, it, it's really helped me, and I don't know that I keep, I don't know that I've asked you, or, or anything along those lines. You haven't mentioned to us that you were having trouble with any.
No, I mean, if you look at the compliance traits, they're pretty good. Your community does a pretty good job of, once they receive a violation, of cleaning it up, before they even have to go to court, really. We have a very low percentage of violations that we pursue that go into the court system. And so that's a balancing act of, you know, maybe, we're about to come up into the months where high grass slows down significantly. And those are the months that will pick up other violations like substandard structures again and really ramp those up to get those cleaned up to the best of our abilities. Is what I think you're asking.
Yeah, eh, eh, right on.
And also, we had a lot of rain this summer.
Yes, we had a long high grass season last year that I didn't think this year would get close to and it felt like it was longer than last year's high grass season. So we're finally starting to see um, not as many high grass cases in the month of October.
Can you give us an example of what uh, maybe a court complaint is or?
So, what a court complaint is, is when somebody does not comply with a violation, it's it's called a city ordinance violation. And so you have to cite the city ordinance that they're violating, so your city has adopted that there's high grass limits that you allow. There's trash and debris requirements. And then you adopt the property maintenance code, which is a lot of your miscellaneous violations. You submit that to the court listing what specific ordinance they have violated with documentation of the violation. And then the court will handle that from there as far as requiring the applicant or the defendant to come in. And they had to make a plea, whether they're guilty, not guilty, or it's gonna be a no contest. And then from there, they'll either be set for a trial or they will get a plan in place to get this cleaned up according to the judge.
And for the new members, I'll just do a quick explanation. We burdened Ben with these reports because we were looking to see if we needed to tweak some of our ordinances. And and he, this is hard data and he can say, hey, I've been having trouble with this ordinance and that.
Feedback is great.
Yeah, I, you know, really, it it's really helped me and I don't know that I keep, I don't know that I've asked you or or anything along those lines. Uh, you haven't mentioned to us that you were having trouble with any.
No, I mean, if you look at the compliance traits, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
Uh, your community does a pretty good job of once they receive a violation of cleaning it up, um, before they even have to go to court, really. Um, we have a very low percentage of violations that we pursue that go into the court system. And when they do, they're usually compliant. Um, I've been here four years now and we just now abated three properties, which is pretty unheard of in code enforcement world. Usually you're doing a good bit of them every year because you have absent property owners that don't care if they have high grass, stayed away. It it is what it is. When we, when they take the property from me, cause I stopped paying my taxes on it, they'll take it out of the liens of the cell and, you know. But your community's been pretty good. So as far as ordinances are concerned, they wouldn't have to be tweaked for those. Um, we are gonna have to tweak the subs, the vacant commercial ordinance again, but that's just due to fees. Um, I talked to the attorney and we set it up to where every year you had it, it got more expensive to keep it. And the attorney, um, is saying it should be a flat fee, that essentially it's not a money-making machine. So you'd have to have the argument that every year they have the violation that you're performing more and more duties to answer to the increase of the fees.
Yeah, we, we did that to put more.
I know, and I, I was not happy that that was the determination, but it, you know, it's one of those, we'll just have to change it, but.
Now, I interrupted all this, so have you completed your code enforcement report?
Um, I have, I just wanted to discuss with the commission briefly on what you wanna see. I know there's discussion, we used to keep a tab of the total numbers that we've been doing, um, but as the number increases, it kinda gets more and more ridiculous to keep there. I don't know what you wanna see, if you wanna see anything else outside of what's happening this year, or if you wanna see a month-by-month comparison compared to this month in twenty twenty-five to last year's month in twenty twenty-five, or what do you wanna see? If anything, you don't, it didn't, there doesn't have to be something there. I just know at a time, we wanted to see what the proactive numbers were.
So, uh, I know we got new members coming on and uh, we all pretty much talk about what properties or they may be reporting, what they see. Uh, maybe like an update on the different properties that's in court. You know, uh, and it don't have to be every meeting, but maybe every three months or six months or so, so we'll know, okay, it's being handled. So the new guys ain't calling in about the same stuff over and over and we'll know that they're actually getting handled. Cause we send a percentage and that's good, but like some of these cases we dealt with and we talked about previously, but we don't know if, or their status.
Yeah.
Just, just update, not every meeting, but you know.
Is that an actionable item to you or?
Well, I mean, we could do it a quarterly report where, you know, we've had, uh, let's say we have seven court complaints that have remained open for quite some time, then I can give you a separate sheet that would go with this report, but it would just say, this is the address. This is where it stands and this is where we foresee it going kinda thing. And you just get that, you'll get it four times, cause it'd be a quarterly, so you won't have to read it every time. Because it's not, the unfortunate reality when it gets into court world is it moves slow. And so you won't, if I gave you a report every month, you're not gonna get it, see anything different from a month to month. But you may see something change within two months, three months.
What, what's a, uh, a legitimate reason that they don't wanna comply with, that it gets to court, is just they don't wanna?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, it de- it depends the scenario. I mean, you have some sovereign citizens out there that don't believe that the code applies. You have some that are in a different state, so it may be hard for them to find somebody to mow grass from time to time. Um, I know I get a lot of that where there'll be a property owner, even just two hours away, they're in the state of Texas, they're two hours away. They don't come to Rockdale, so they schedule a gentleman or or someone to go out there and mow it. They forget to mow it that weekend. We send them a notice and they're like, well, we didn't realize they didn't mow it, cause they're on a schedule.
So most of them are, the ones that are in court are, uh, high grass, or is there any like, um, structural or?
We, I have a lot of miscellaneouses in court. Um, the vacant commercials is gonna be, almost all of them are in court, cause we don't see much compliance with that program right now. Uh, you have some high grasses, you have some trash, you have, um, I don't think there's any property maintenance violations in there right now. Um, but even though the high grass total is the largest, that's really the easiest one to deal with, so you don't see too many of those go to court. But on the three properties.
Also have the option of going and mowing it in charge, right?
Right, when they get, the way that, um, it's handled currently is even if they get a court notice and they mow it before their court date, we'll typically close it out for them with no fines, so a lot of people will do that.
How do y'all feel about comparing it to the previous year? Is that difficult for you?
No, I keep a spreadsheet by a year-to-year basis, so.
I like that.
He probably just bringing the machine.
Yeah, it's, I, that's how I get these numbers, is I have a running tally, I don't even have to count them, it's just, it's a formula in Excel, it counts it for me. I just go on there and I look at it and then I give you the numbers of what's already in the spreadsheet, so.
Would that expose yearly violators, same person violating?
Well, um, not by a number format. If I, if you recall the, for the, the new ones, I gave a report, it used to be a spreadsheet that was, um, just names and addresses and it was really hard to read and boring to read. And, um, that would be the way you would tell is if I started giving you names of repeat violators, um, we've been doing proactive code enforcement for so long now that almost everybody's a repeat violator at least once now. It's very rare that I get somebody new.
I like the idea of comparing the years.
Yeah, progress, I think, what she's saying, more towards, showing the progress, cause you've done a lot since then.
Okay, so you wanna keep the year total, so I, 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 I think I can envision what you're saying. You wanna bar graph, it'll basically be the year and then you'll see as you start. What years are slower, what years are faster.
Let's start with that idea.
Yeah, we'll just, we can build it from there.
You never use, you know, Bush for your raise or? So how well you've been doing.
Are you, are you ready, are we clear, we're, we're ready to move to the next one?
Yes, I, I, unless y'all got more questions, I'm, I got direction.
We're gonna move on to number five, receive the monthly development services department report, please.
Okay, so the month of September was extremely slow in permitting world. Uh, we only had nine building permits and two plumbing permits. Uh, but we did get a new home. And, um, it was not at the cornerstone subdivision, this one's for four thirteen East Hamilton. It's a plot you guys saw about three years ago.
I was gonna say.
And, um, they had a structure there, they tore it down, then they plotted it to make two lots. It took them a very long time to get the plot done with the surveyor. It got done, it's filed now as of last Friday. They pulled a building permit. And, um, they're estimating it to be about one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, just a little bit over that. Um, other than that, there's about a little under a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in other miscellaneous building permits that were pulled. It was, again, it was a pretty, pretty slow permitting month, so it was very small projects like re-roofs and fencing, nothing major. Any questions on that report?
Oh, is it appropriate to ask for progress on neighborhoods that we've permitted? Cause there's a couple of projects, I'm still kinda holding my breath on it, don't seem to be.
Um, I can give you, if you wanna do similar of like a quarterly report, because it's not gonna be that much changeover on a month-by-month basis, but I can at least give you a rundown. I'll tell you, since it is part of the development world, I can answer the questions. We, um, the one that Republic Ridge, that you're familiar with that hasn't started yet, is, um, I talked to the owner of that and there seems to be a couple of people interested in that project as far as building it out. I asked him if that meant building as, as is, with how it's currently plotted, or if they wanna change that plot, and he was not sure. So it's still very preliminary. As far as cornerstone's going, they've been pretty slow this year on pulling permits compared to last year. Um, I imagine they're probably done for the year. If they're anything like last year, they're done for the year. Cause what they did last year is about the August timeframe, they kinda cut it off. Um, because I believe they have a quota they meet on their fiscal years, just the same as ours, I believe. And once they meet that new home quota, then they don't build anymore.
I did a five through out there and they're extending a section, but they're just putting in underground.
Well, now the site work is, is moving fast as far as, you know, cause, so you have D R Horton, the builder, and I'm referring to the homes being built. You have the developer that is Rancho Development, that's currently working on three phases at the same time. That's what you're seeing out there and they're using a tremendous amount of water right now.
Waking all the snakes up.
Well, they discovered the rock of Rockdale out there, they found some sandstone boulders out there. Pretty amazing that that was out there in the middle of a field like that.
Yeah. Um, and then there may be a third one that you'll see soon potentially.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you, do that every ninety days or so, permitted developments? Progress, yes or no, or I don't know how you would break it down, but.
I can just give you a brief description of what's going on and then we can talk about it further if you have questions.
I appreciate that.
Hey, how about the, um, the old car quest, did that, um, they fall through or they're just still in the process? Were they wanted to put in a storage units?
Oh, they, they revoked the application. Yes.
Any other questions regarding the development services department report? We'll move on to item number six, conduct a workshop regarding the zoning ordinance.
Okay, this is gonna be a pretty quick workshop. Um, I just, we talked at the last meeting, we were looking at the tailor, um, how they did it in their unified development code. You said that you liked, um, their tables that Shannon spun up, it's also in your packet, this is what we looked at last time. And they provided information, essentially what the black circles mean is it's a permitted use in that zoning district and if it's not filled in, that means you cannot do it there. They also provided information as far as, um, landscaping requirements, lot sizes, things like that.
Regarding that, how did you do that? Is this standard? Pr- I prob- oh man, I'm losing my voice. Is that standard process? Did you develop this or did we copy somebody with this?
Well, a lot of the planning world is, it's really anybody's world. I say planning world, I'm sure everybody does this. You don't really reinvent the wheel if you don't have to. So Taylor created a really good project that I'm pretty sure they got from somebody else. And we have just since used a similar format to what they did and we created it from scratch to make something that's easily as readable as theirs is.
I wanted to give credit where credit was due, thank you for the format.
It, yes, it, it took some time. Um, we will post it on the website at some point because I'll get into those tables in a minute, but what they are is it's what your current standards are. So that way, when we start talking about, um, different potential amendments that may come, we at least know where we lay and if we wanna make that change or not. Okay, uh, I wanted to go over the street types, cause in the table you'll see, um, street types and they have different ones, there's an entrance roadway, there's major thoroughfares, secondary thoroughfares. A quick description of what you need to know that you'll see the most of is first, there is what we refer as a minor street. You also hear it referred to as a local street. Think of short streets that have a lot of homes on it. Um, a good example would be Skiles. You know, it is a road that only services the homes, it is a local road. You then move up to the collector world, where it's a collector street, that would be streets that those local streets feed into. And then they take you to either other local streets or a highway. Those are called collectors, so think about Murray, where a lot of roads meet, feed into Murray and Murray's a really long street that you can get to al- almost all the way across town, really. Then after that, you have your thoroughfares, which is your highways. We really don't have anything to do with highways, cause it's all text dot usually. But that's just something to keep in mind. Those, those are roads that have very minimal housing on it. It's really to get you from point A to point B with no stops in between.
Before we get into the, uh, discussion on the conditions of the roads, is there a way? Can we or should we, uh, under the block scoring traffic trips, color code a map that shows the present count, car count?
Oh, yeah, I could do that in G I S if you wanna see it, um, for our future workshops is, you know, I started, so Barbara started the street analysis, when we get there, we'll talk about it further. Um, and I took it over and the traffic count that was used was a little high as far as what our community's concerned, so I think the highest you'll see from our end is like a moderate to moderate high, which is reasonable. I mean, if you're gonna do traffic counts, that it really is what the count is. But if you tailor it to your community, you know, then you get what I'm saying, it would essentially go up, maybe some of your lows would be moderates and your moderate highs would be highs. It, it would scale, so, but we'll get into that in a little bit. I just wanted you to see this, so that way you understand, um, why it's on the zoning spreadsheet, because we have a, we have a zoning ordinance and then we have a subdivision regulation ordinance. And those are two things that tie very much into what you guys do and what staff does, is when we get a development, this is where our plotting standards come from, why lot sizes are certain sizes, why the street has to be designed that certain ways, because it's in your subdivision regulation ordinance. This is within that, so when a developer comes to us and asks us, we wanna make a three hundred lot subdivision and we wanna put in local roads and collector roads, that's, that's the normal ball you're gonna get. And they come to us and they say, we only wanna make minor roads, but we want them to be forty foot right of way, well, it doesn't meet your code. You know, it has to be a fifty foot and then you actually define that they have to have a one ten-foot traffic lane with some parking spaces. That's just for your information only, it's not something you have to memorize.
So what would be out there at Cornerstone now?
Cornerstone is locals and then they have, so if you think about when you enter on Cornerstone, that would be a collector, because all of the local roads feed into that road and it takes you to the highway. But once you get off that road and you start getting into Perry Place and things like that, some of those as it builds out will be a collector, but most of them are local roads.
So Belton would be a collector, right?
Yes, Belton is a collector.
Brazos?
Brazos is a collector, Murray is a collector, um, Bell is a collector, Belton, Devilla. Those that are, think of your very long roads. Usually if you have a really long road, it's gonna be a collector, just because you have a lot of roads feeding into that. And so I gave some examples, so a minor street would be something like this, where you see how it ties in, this is by the high school. If you turn on Danway, you're only accessing Danway.
Pizza Hut is down at the bottom.
Yeah, that's right. And so it doesn't, it doesn't feed into anything else, is why it's a local road. Now, collector, there's Brazos highlighted with Murray. As you can see, all of these smaller local roads feed into these roads that all then go to Brazos, is why it's a collector. Just think of longer roads, it's a really easy way to think about that. And then your thoroughfares are your highways, so that's Cameron, nine oh eight and four eighty-seven. And those are your most high-trafficked roads.
And in our ci- in our city, those are also state.
That's right. In, in our community, that's not something that we have any authority over, so it would be text dot roads. And it'd be their jurisdiction of, of how they handle those roads. Um, to get into the tables, so there's a table for each zoning that you have, the color corresponds to what the zoning color is on the zoning map if you were ever to look at it. Um, what I put on there is your lot requirements as far as sizing, building setbacks. You'll then see that it goes into building types of what's allowed. Then there's blocks in case you're coming up with a new development and you have to create a block length of your road, of what our minimum requirement is and then what our maximum requirement is. And then I put in additional requirements of different parking requirements, if there's any landscaping required. Where you can park, whether it's on-street or off-street, and then the different type of street types you would see that would service this type of zoning in a new development. And so for agriculture, it's the biggest lot size, is it has less, the least amount of density. So if you were to see a development, it would really be a minor road that would come through there. Uh, I know you have some FM roads that go through agriculture, but it wouldn't be the best practice if you have a new development coming in to put a highway straight through a whole bunch of ag property. And it just goes on so forth and so forth. I won't go through all of them with you guys, um, but that's just something that you now have as far as what, what we've talked about in these past workshops, but just in a format that is easier to read.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you something on agricultural, but it's not as important as I thought it was gonna be, but it was a category, live work.
Live work, um, is essentially, think of your downtown where you have a two-story building and the bottom half of it is a, a coffee shop and the top half of it is your studio apartment that you live in when you're not on the clock. That's a live work. And the bottom half of it is a coffee shop and the top half of it is your studio apartment that you live in when you're not on the clock. That's a live work. So other than that, that's really gonna conduct the zoning workshop of this. Unless y'all have any comments on these tables, we'll just ask you to keep them in your binder. We're gonna be pretty busy with the street workshop probably till the rest of this year is over with, so we won't have any more zoning workshops. For a little while, um, just know in that time, we're going for a grant. That is gonna be on the council agenda in October and then we will officially apply. If they um, allow us to apply, we'll apply. And then I'll keep you guys updated on how that goes, but that could potentially fund a zoning ordinance rewrite for us.
So these will stay in our notebook?
Those stay in your notebook. I will um, get them posted on the city website, so if you ever wanna refer back to them, you can have them.
What was your goal for the workshop regarding the zoning ordinance?
The goal was just to let you have these tables to understand why I've given them to you and then for you to know that we're gonna put a brief pause. On zoning workshops until we get the streets done.
Have we met that? Did y'all learn anything? And and that's gonna come through council at the meeting or a special workshop or when will that?
The upcoming October meeting, um, next Monday, they'll see a resolution put before them to award the bid. To um, a grant writer essentially to go for that grant.
Any other questions on this workshop?
That, we're about to go over that. So yeah, that that's, that's just an item.
I'm trying to get there, I'm trying to get there. Alright, that completes number six. Number seven, conduct a workshop regarding street analysis.
Okay, Shannon's.
Goes back to the beginning of this tab, right?
That should be, well, for me, it's at the end of my packet. There should be a twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five street analysis report that you had, should have. That, so we'll go over this. As fast or as slow as you need, because these are some terms that you'll need to at least have an understanding of as we start going through and rating these streets. Um, so. There's some terminology that you need to know. It's also in your analysis report. If I go over this too fast, um, some important ones is you have base failure. That's a. The worst condition that your street can be in. Yeah, because if if you have base failure, that means you pretty much have to redo your whole street. You're taking everything out, you're redoing the base. And then you're putting the overlay on top. It's the most expensive thing to do. It's essentially a complete redo of your street. Um, other terminology that you'll see is we have a chip seal plus and a chip seal minus. Um, this is something that Barbara started. And what she meant by it was if there's a chip seal plus, it meant it had a curb. It's still a chip seal road, but there's a curb with it. And then if it's a minus, it was a chip seal road, but there's no curb. That's something that Tim asked for us. He wanted to know what was curbed, what wasn't curbed. And then he also wanted to know um, if there's a sidewalk. So you'll see a term in here that's rural, which means there's no curb, no sidewalk. There's urban that just had a curb, no sidewalk, and then full urban means there's a curb and a sidewalk. Um, there is gonna be a lot of cracking terminology that you see throughout the spreadsheet. So I've tried to provide pictures. So you have what's called alligator cracking. It's cracking that looks just like alligator skin. Um, this is arguably the worst cracking that you can have in a road, because it means you have base failure. If you see that and you're redoing that section, if not more. You then have block cracking, which is similar to alligator cracking, but you can see the difference. It's more of a square pattern instead of the previous. Alligator pattern where it is a lot of different shapes and sizes. A good thing to think about with this is the larger the squares are, then the newer it is. But the smaller it gets is the more pavement life has passed by in the road. And that, this doesn't always mean that there's base failure, by the way. But it's just something to think about. If you go out there and you see really small squares, then you might start getting into a base problem. You then have longitudinal cracking, which is just cracking that runs parallel to the center line. And then you have transverse cracking, that's the opposite of that, that it runs through the center line perpendicular. Um, the other, another term that you'll see that used a lot is edge feathering. It's essentially cracking or lost some material at the edge of the roadway. Um, you then have this type of cracking pattern, which we didn't have very much of in the city, which is um. When you overlay existing cracking and it just cracks again pretty much almost immediately. You'll see them go out there and patch it like this, because they don't wanna do another overlay. Usually when that happens, that means that you probably had base failure. And you just did a really short-term fix to a long-term problem. Um, is usually an indicator of that. We don't have too much of that. I think we did have some. Um, now we'll get into the scoring. So if you look at your analysis, I think it goes on page two. We were asked to rate the streets on a scale of one to five, one being really good and five being really, really bad. And um, I will tell you in that scoring criteria, if it had base failure. Then we put it at is either failure or poor. Anything above failure or poor didn't have base failure. Um, it was to my assessment, Justin Williams' assessment and Barbara's assessment, that you have a lot of roads with base failure. So we did that on a block-by-block basis. We also put the traffic count in that I was referring to earlier. This is what I mean by it. So you have very low, which is less than two hundred trips a day. If you remember what a trip is, a trip is if you go to your house, that's one trip. If you leave it, that's another trip. The mailman comes, that's a trip and so on and so forth. It's not a back and forth is one trip, it's once and then you leave, it's another one. So we're saying two hundred trips or less, very low, between two hundred and fifteen hundred is a low, moderate fifteen hundred to five thousand. Medium high or moderate high you'll see in this spreadsheet is five thousand to ten thousand and then anything above ten thousand is high. Um, so in the block-by-block analysis, so every one hundred block, we have, in our opinion. Three excellent blocks, forty-eight good, one forty-three average, one ninety poor and ninety-two that are in failing state. And then we did it on a street basis, just in case you didn't care about just the blocks, you wanna see, know the street as a whole, what it averaged out. We didn't have any excellent streets. We had eleven good ones, forty average ones, fifty-four poor ones and forty-three failure ones.
Go back, go back one slide, please. One more.
This one?
Yeah, I was trying to see how they, the block versus the street uh, totals were looking. Now go forward. Pretty, pretty close. If it's failing in the block, the street's probably failing.
Well, and what I did is um, say you had five one hundred blocks in a street. And maybe three of them were average and two of them were poor, then there was more average than poor, so it was an average street. Or if you had five one hundred blocks again and three of them were average and two of them were failing, then we put it in poor. Because you meet in the middle kinda thing. That's kinda how we averaged them out. The question is, why do we have to do this? Is because your charter requires that you approve. Or send a recommendation really to city council on capital improvement programs. And as we're starting to move forward with street projects, the Planning and Zoning Commission is the ultimate responsible board to um. Give this recommendation.
Our goal this year is February.
That's right. I'm hoping to get this done by February. Um, I'm at least hoping to get all the streets scored by January. And then I'll come back to you in February with what your scores were and what we're recommending and then we can hash it out and give official recommendations for there. Um, now, if you'll pull up Shannon, the scoring sheet. I made the assumption and we can change this if you wanna change it, but we're gonna sh- we'll have to grade each street. And give it its own score sheet. I figured we would rather do this together than individually for the sake of time. But if you want each commissioner to score their own streets, we can and we can go through it together. If not, we'll just do it on the computer together and we'll look at applicable information to grade them. Because I've graded them for you, but you may not agree with my ratings, which is why we're doing this. And then the important part about it is if Shannon, if you scroll down just a little bit. There may be a sheet in your packet. I know I had one of the scoring sheet for streets. It's very similar to your P and Z scoring sheet. Of how those grades are working and and how we're gonna rate them. Can you zoom in on that? Is it on the bottom right?
Is that not the separate page that's in our?
It should be. I think, cause I had one and you may have one as well.
Yeah. Street scoring uh, matrix should be in your first.
Yeah, the street scoring matrix. If you'll look at that, because that's what we're gonna use to grade these together. Um, but if you see, it's essentially the same thing as your P and Z scoring matrix. There's a question to the left. So like, what's the condition of the street overall? If it's excellent, then it gets a one. If it's infailing, it gets a five. Um, essentially the way that this scoring sheet is set up is the higher the score you're gonna give these streets is the worst condition it's in. And the more priority it's probably gonna be for you guys. Um, if you scroll down just a little bit, Shannon. I also put in a personal scoring section, because if we only score these streets based off a condition, then you're not gonna reach a different conclusion than what I've reached most likely. So what I put in here is your personal preference as a commission of the importance of the repair. And so I put years in there. If you believe that it needs to be repaired in the next two years and it's a high priority. If it's something that doesn't need to be repaired in the ten-plus years, then it's a low priority. So get a low score. Um, same, we have a cost estimate um, in another spreadsheet if we need to pull it up. That we can actually give you the price of what we think it will cost to do it. If you think it's too, too much for what it's worth. It's overpriced, you put a one. If it's a really good price, then we'd put a five. And then just a personal preference of the board. You know, if you don't think it's a priority. Then we would just rate it a one and if you think it needs to be done yesterday, then we'd rate it a five. But we'll go through this together. This is essentially what we're gonna be doing as a workshop until we get this done. Um, it can go as fast as you want. I have any information that you need, so there's another spreadsheet if Shannon will pull it up of the streets. Individually where they're located at. I have pictures of them if you wanna look at the pictures, but we can talk it out. Of however much you wanna talk about these, we can talk about them.
When do you foresee doing that as a workshop or?
Now.
Today?
Start today and we'll just keep going. Um, if you'll go all the way to the As. We'll just start at the start. Um, while she's doing that, is there any questions?
You want us to have a scoring matrix right now today? Is this inactive for this?
What I was envisioning is we'll do this together. So Shannon will have it on the spreadsheet unless you wanna do it individually. But if we do it together as a commission, we'll just fill it out in real time of what our priorities are.
Can we get the lights down?
Yeah.
It's hard to see.
Hey, uh, Ben, two years ago, there was a gentleman that was all, at almost every city council meeting. He was talking about the condition of the street and the parking and different things, almost every meeting. And then there was Linda Tibbetts or somebody that came in saying their street was hazardous to walk on. She fell and all that kinda stuff. Do we give any kinda priority to citizens that have complained about that? We, we haven't had it in probably two years now, maybe. I don't know when they both would come in, but.
Well, I mean, as far as um, if a citizen were to come in and complain about a pothole, we'll use that example. You know, I take it can be put in the system for a fix. Just know that it's not a, it might not be a long-term fix, depending on what the street condition is.
Right.
Um, it may just be a temporary uh, patch and.
And and this is for budgetary purposes that we're presenting council.
Right. This, the reason we're doing this today is because you're tasked with giving a recommendation of how you seem. That they should use CIP funding for the year, which is improvement, capital improvement projects is what that is. And so Tim has said that he wants to use them on streets. And so I've given him this spreadsheet. We felt that you should see this spreadsheet at least and score. So that way you as the body are giving the recommendation and not myself, because by charter, you're the responsible party, not myself. Um, now, we can zoom in as much as you need on this, um, but the first one we'll do together is Alamo. So Alamo is right here. This is the park. For those that may not know where Alamo is, it's a pretty small street. A lot of these streets we're gonna blow through.
We have the matrix here, so you could really delete unless you really.
Yeah, you can just move this matrix to the side and we'll just fill it out in a minute. Cause they, we need to see the notes.
What park are you referring to?
Veterans Park is right here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Until Alamo, it's just. Um, and then if you'll zoom in a little bit on the comments. So. Uh, the important part on this that we noticed as a staff and we took, when we went out there and did this analysis, there's some surface loss on the street. There's a lot of patching. They have longitudinal cracking and they have potholes. And so we rated this as a failure um, due to that, because we also suspect that there's some base failure in there. Um, it's an urban cross-section. I think the traffic was very low. Um, but if there's, if you wanna see pictures of what we saw to do this writing together, I have the pictures.
Since you're declaring that is a, let's see what it looks like, please.
Okay.
What street is this again?
This is Alamo. So we're gonna go in alphabetical, just to make it easy on, on us is. So we will, we will hit every street. And I will say, there's a chance I could have missed a street. So if you um, think of anything as we start getting down it and we're, remember it's alphabetical. So if I miss a street and we're, there's a B street I missed and we're in the Cs and we haven't done it, I missed it. So y'all need to tell me and we'll, we'll look at it together. Yes, um, it should be in order. So, and there should be a name on the top of it, I think, of which block it is.
Four years from now, y'all will be doing this lickety, just boom, boom, boom. This is.
Well, what I'll tell you is um, don't clutch your pearls yet, because this is really the only time we're gonna have to do this. And then after that, it'll just be small updates, because as the streets start to get improved, what I'm gonna do is go out there and reassess the street, give it a good rating. So you'll have your ratings. So what this list is doing now is you'll give us all of your ratings. I'll put them all on a spreadsheet and as the years pass by and we get to them, they'll just move up the chain. And then if anything unforeseeing happens to where maybe a waterline burst and bust open a whole street. Maybe that comes a little bit more of a priority, but it's a one-off. It's, we don't have to do this again. So this, you're really taking on the blunt of the work for your. Yourself and your future planning commissioners.
Question. Is cornerstone not considered in this?
We did not do cornerstone in this, um, because at the time that we were conducting this, not many of the streets were done. And they're all excellent.
Right, that's why I was asking.
They, they all will be excellent. Um, they will be added though. So that is a, that is a good question. I was telling my coworker about that the other day. Justin Williams did this with me, so if you see him, thank him. But um, we'll probably add cornerstone this upcoming year, because what we're gonna, what I'm gonna do as a staff is we'll go out here every year and look at things. To make sure, see if, if the ratings still hold up or if it's gotten worse, or maybe it got repaired slightly to make it a little bit better. We'll, we'll do that one of the work.
You'll have to do that in phases. Like phase one where four or five streets in there?
Uh, well, yeah. So if we do it now, if we go out to cornerstone this year, then yes, we would only be rating the streets from phase one. A to one C is all that's done right now. Um, and then it'll just keep, it'll keep getting added as inventory. Just like if you have new subdivisions come in, it'll be added with new inventory. But you won't have to see them, because they're gonna be excellent streets. So it's not something that you'll have to necessarily rate. Okay, so this is the first picture of the, the hundred block of Alamo. If you can see, there's some square cracking here. There's a lot of cracking. Um, I think, is there another one hundred block in this or is it? No, it might just be just the one. Um, but that's what we saw on site and again, the reason we rated a failure is um. We suspect that there's base failure. As a staff, we didn't wanna say that there's base failure.
That is through Sonic?
The only way to really prove it is through that, um, but you can have a good idea based on your cracking. And surface loss. Um, if you start having surface loss, that means you have really old pavement out there. And that's one of the notes that we had on this one is, so that section's pretty old.
Is that street curbed?
This street is curbed. It's an urban street. There is no sidewalk. So it would just be an urban.
You say it's curved?
Curbed. It's a straight street, but it has curbed, curbs. Okay, um.
When you say surface loss, you mean like the top of it is coming up?
Yes, the materi- so what a surface loss is, is the material that you put down, essentially the material is starting to wash away and starting to become. Usually a smoother surface.
Lot of that comes from the asphalt. That adhere, that it's the adhesive and once that's dried out, there's nothing to hold but aggregate.
Right. Yeah, you, you lose that. It can also be caused, um, it's usually caused because of a. Right, yeah, you, you lose that, it can also be caused, um it's usually caused because of age, um is really the main causing factor that there's some scenarios where um, if you have some drainage issues, it'll wash away your surface, but that's pretty rare. Um if we go back to the spreadsheet, if we've all looked at the picture, we can grade this together quickly on what you think. Cause this may not be a failure to you, um it, it is your determination, so however y'all score that, this is, this is your decisions. I'm just here to help you make those decisions.
It's a group.
That's right.
I, I would think it's a failure.
So if you'll go to the scoring sheet? Yeah, cause we'll, we'll grade it together and then if we need to pull up the picture, we will. So the first question is the condition of the street overall, which in this case, there's only one one hundred block, so your answer's gonna be the same on both. The reason I split that out is some of them, you'll have um a couple hundred blocks. And then you'll have the street overall, so maybe a couple hundred blocks aren't as bad as the overall street or vice versa. Um so y'all said failure, so Shanna's gonna highlight number five for failure, so that'd be five points to it. I'm assuming you'll probably wanna go the same way on the blocks at a five. Um the surface condition of what do you think, it has surface loss and some cracking in it, there's not a lot of, there were some potholes.
To me, it's more of a poor, not a
Okay.
Complete failure, my opinion.
I can, I, I agree with that, we can do a four.
Did, did you say that, that picture is like the only really bad place where you can see the?
Um, that's the only picture we have, we have Google Maps if you wanna use it to go down the road if we need to. Um I asked her to pull up a lot of stuff, so y'all can thank Shanna after this. Um but yes, if you wanna see, I only took, every one hundred block only took one picture, because I knew the amount of pictures that this sheet was gonna have. And uh, but we always have Google Maps to also go off of, so we can do that.
And by your opinion, under base condition, you're telling us it's a failure?
Well, I thought it was, um but it could be a poor, if you think so, it's, it's your discretion. Yeah, that's good, so this is Alamo as well, so that's where um, if you see this right here, that's the surface loss I'm referring to.
Oh, yeah.
Um if you go, go up a little bit, yeah, sure. It, you just kinda see it, I mean, it's, there's some blocks that aren't too, too bad, but you can see the cracking that's, that started, it's, it's an old street.
Looks like some of it, when it goes up into a driveway, it starts.
Yeah, some of them, like this one has alligator cracking at the drive. Um that doesn't necessarily indicate base failure right there, that's more of, even though it's alligator cracking, that's almost seen as like an edge feathering thing, more than alligator cracking.
You replace the curb too? I get this cracked up or?
You, if the curb is in disrepair, you would, if it's not, you don't have to. But if you're going to do the street, you just have to make sure that you're not messing up your curbing system, as in you're not. A good example is, some cities will do an overlay of an existing street, and then that overlay causes the curbs not to work anymore, because the way the curb works is there's a dip that holds the water, because if you elevate the street.
I've seen that.
Yeah, essentially, the, i- if you can imagine if this crown of the street's right here, and the curb is lower than the crown of the street, then the water's gonna run off the street. So the way curbs are supposed to be designed is it's supposed to be even, so it goes down the crown of the street and holds in the curb, and then it goes into your outlets. Is the way it's supposed to work.
It's under base condition?
And then, yeah, so we rated it pretty badly, it's, there's just a lot of cracking, um a lot of aged cracking. Um so we put failure, it's your discretion, it may not be a failure to the planning commission, which is, is fine. Um but how would you like to rate?
Question.
That, yes.
So we know red bud is a failure.
Yes, red bud is beyond a failure.
Right, so like comparing, you know, how you, you gonna go to like picking the top street you gonna start with first?
Yeah, how, how are you gonna?
How you rate that with the fa- like, cause this one compared to other ones, we haven't really seen the other ones. Cause like let on, we might be like, oh now this is a failure, and then we come back to this, like, oh, that's nothing compared to.
I think.
They say that that's under.
Well.
Like compared to.
What I would say is that's a good point, first off, but what I would say is the top of your sheet, um there may be different ranges of failure, but it's all still a failure. It's what I would more say to that, cause in, in my world, it's the way that myself and Justin looked at it, is if you have base failure, then that's a failure of a street, because you gotta redo the whole thing. It doesn't matter it, how bad it necessarily is, you're still redoing it one way or the other, to really fix that street, so it's a failure.
How do you set your priority to which street?
Well, that's, that's the next part, is we can go ahead and rate, if you look at the bottom of this, we have the importance of the repair, what the cost would be, we can go over that together, and then your personal priority. We can change that, if we, if we say Alamo's really bad, and then we start getting into the red buds of the world and like, hey, Alamo's really not that bad. It's still a failure, but it's not as much of a priority, does that make sense?
So if we get to the end and we got like all the poor and all the failures, would you go back in them and start kinda rating them?
We can, if, if we get through it fast enough, where we rate enough pours and failures, I can bring them all back to you and say, alright, this is your list of thirty streets that you had as poor and failure. These are the pictures of them that we went over last time, now that you see them all together, what do you think? We can do that.
The other thing you have to consider is like red bud is a poured concrete street.
Yes.
You can go in with the machine we have and take off the asphalt, the, forgot the name of that thing. And that's a whole different repair from jackhammering or digging out.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I have quotes for all that, that's why I have a cost repair, because um you'll have some streets we'll get into that don't have base failure, so you really can just do an overlay to them and you'll be fine. And then you have others that you have to do a base repair, and then I have concrete streets in there as well. They all have costs to them, if you wanna see the cost, you don't have to see the cost if you don't want to.
And the tree, they gotta come up.
Yeah, I mean, red bud's a unique case, whereas the trees on the side is what we were told is causing those problems, and so it's one of those, you wanna fix a street, but it's just not a wise investment, if you can't resolve the problem that's causing it to do that. Um so that'd be something that the city manager would have to work with um the neighboring owners to talk about those trees of what they wanna do with that. Um as far as Alamo, going back to that, um I hope that answered the question, I mean, we can always come back and revisit on that. Um what do you guys think of the base, do you think it's in poor or failing condition, or do you think it's better than both of those? And maybe it's an average or not too bad?
I think poor is a fair assessment.
I think poor.
You rated it a failure?
I did, but I mean, I, I was kind of, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty.
Only because I know you see all the streets, so you see more than what we gonna see, so you see.
Yeah, you got red bud in my head now.
Well.
Comparing the board to the failure versus us just looking at one street at a time.
The one thing I'll say to that is I was pretty harsh. I mean, I was very like cut and dry, if it was a base failure, then it's, it's a failure unless that condition of that street's pretty good. Which is like, if it's a base failure, how is the condition of the street gonna be any good?
Only deal is, looking at it, it doesn't, I'm, I'm all over town all day long, and I, I know where streets are that are a lot worse than that.
Yeah.
That's my thought too, it's like, it's at least still smooth and not all potholy and like, I think there's a lot of.
Right in front of a biting choice, I mean, you gotta have four-wheel drive to get down that.
Yeah, there's some.
That thing is ridiculous.
There's some pretty bad ones, and, and, and again, that's your discretion, you know, I, I rated them all. When I did a failure, there was levels to the failure, but they were also a failure. The commission could do the opposite of that, and y'all can really only list a couple of them as failures, that are your really, really bad ones, and you can do a lot of pours. It's your discretion, at the end of the day, of how you wanna rate that, there is no right or wrong answer.
Category of passable or impassable or?
It's, you know, it, it really comes down to whatever you want that to mean. For me, failure was base, base failure, if there's base failure, then it was just a failing street. For the planning commission, it can be more than that, and that's, that's perfectly fine, that's why we're doing this exercise together.
I'm new to this, guys, I, I'm trying to catch up on all this, but to me, because we're doing a tally of numbers and trying to get averages, I would move it into the poor category on ba- on condition of where we at.
Well, on base condition.
Base condition.
Of what we think, based on the type of cracking out there, um there's elements that it says that you have a little bit of base failure. So to your extent, is it poor or is it failing as a base, and it, if you wanna put poor, that's perfectly fine.
And the majority's saying poor, so.
Yeah, we can go with poor.
Yeah.
Um now, I put the traffic impact on there, because I figure as a commission, you're probably going to want to recommend the ones that have more traffic on it than others that do not. Um and on the spreadsheet, we don't have to go back to it, but there's a traffic count on it, and it was very low, I believe. So this is the.
Minor, it's minor, so.
Go to the, the right just a little bit, Shanna, on you, yeah. Yeah, so the traffic impact, you have single-family development around there, there's no commercial, and then you just have very low traffic, because there's not too many houses on that street.
I agree with minor.
Okay, we'll do minor.
No, well, y'all, hey, whoa, 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 just cause Doug Williams says something.
I say minimal, the one.
So you have, you have minimal.
In a minor, right?
In a minor, so we have one minimal and one minor, anybody else have a preference?
What was the count again, for those?
Very low, is under two hundred and fifty traffic counts per day.
And that would be minimal?
That would be minimal. Uh mi- minimal, the way to look at minimal is probably like less than a hundred, I would say, minor would be two fifty.
I'll change that, then I'll go with minimal.
Because minimal is like, you're not getting very much traffic at all on that, minor is you get a little bit of traffic, but still not a lot.
One with the other two roads that are there that directly connect to the.
Alamo doesn't see a lot of traffic just the way it's designed, because it's not, it's attached to those two roads that are most likely taking you somewhere else other than Alamo, because Alamo doesn't have that many houses on it.
I say minimal.
Okay. Um, this one I put on here, um since there's only one one hundred block, it would just automatically be a one. Because in, in this case, there's not, there's not more than one block that needs your attention, it's all just one one hundred block.
I'm good.
Um now, the environment, um what this question is saying is what surrounds there, because if it's a commercial development, maybe it's more priority to the planning commission, because it's naturally gonna have higher traffic that goes to it, rather than if it's just residential, it won't have as much, or even if it's agriculture, it's gonna have like hardly anything at all. Um your development around here is single-family, and it's not too many single-family houses. So what I'm asking is, do you wanna put it on a minimal development standpoint, or do you just wanna say it's light density? I would go, if it was me rating it, minimal development would be what I would pick, just because I think you have six to eight homes on this street and that's it.
I'll say minimal.
So it's a very small street.
Charlie?
Agree.
Alright.
Okay, so the next one is the importance of the repair to the commission. Um is it something that you see being done in ten plus years? Remember, we have, I think I have a number here of how many streets we're gonna be grading today, or over this. We have a hundred and forty-eight streets, so keep that in mind when you're picking which streets are, or what level priority they are at.
We can go back and update.
Yeah.
And if you're, if you're afraid on a, a base failure, should we include that in our thought process on this, if, can we push base failure out ten years?
Well.
With a minimal, with a mi- minimal traffic count?
So it's.
Is that realistic?
Let's pull, I'm not a math major, so let's pull out the. So, if we say, if you're really fortunate, you get a redo three to five streets a year. And we have a hundred and forty-two total streets, I mean, you're talking about, there's forty-seven years worth of work to be done?
Uh, uh, we're at least fifty years behind where we should be, yeah.
Ideally, you know, um in an ideal world, you start to get these streets on a timeline where you repair, uh we repair red bud, and so red bud has twenty years of life now, because they say when you put pavement down, depending what you do, concrete's a little bit longer, so that's not the best example, but say you went in there, did asphalt, they say it's a twenty-year life cycle, and then you can resurface it a couple of times, add ten more years, and then after that, you gotta redo the whole thing. You would start to repair them, and then we don't have to worry about red bud for twenty more years, and then it'd just go down the line. So what this question is essentially asking you is, we only have so much capability, knowing how many streets that need to be done, we have a hundred and forty-three, if I haven't missed any, that need to be done. Is Alamo a priority enough to put within ten years? To your recommendation, eight to ten, five to seven, knowing how much streets that we have to do.
Question.
Or is it one of those that the size comes into play, where this is a really small street with not that much traffic? It can wait ten years unfortunately, I know it's a tough call to make.
I have no concept of how long the base lasts or. Twenty years.
Go the same or the other way too, it's being it's a small, smaller street, it can weigh, or being the small street, it won't take as long as.
It could.
A long street.
It could, it depends the priority, is exactly right, you can, you can maybe take into account that maybe you just wanna see a quantity done, then the quality done. And so you could say, we have thirty streets that are all just one one hundred block long, and I wanna do all thirty of them, so I can tell my citizens I've done thirty streets. And then you can do the rest of them later that are, are your big problems, I mean, there's no right or wrong answer, this is why we're talking about it. It is purely discretionary on what you think is a priority.
My deal is like, streets like Mary, that's high traffic. Uh I say by the football field, it's lump, wops out of you, if you drive a trailer, you carrying a refrigerator or something. I mean, even if you gotta tie it down tight, lawnmower or something, that joke's still, them would be more of my priorities, because that's a high traffic and that's versus the little small streets that don't have hardly any traffic, you know. Uh I would push, yeah, yeah, you can get a lot of them done faster, but which one is really the priority, you know, cause people from out of town, we're trying to get more people coming to this town, they ride down that road, like, look at this street, you know. Like in seeing how well we're doing with our streets or our neighborhoods, I would clean it up, when I go to other towns, I got my chest out. You know, so uh I heard, I had someone complaining about the pain on the curves and stuff, you know, just stuff like that, you know. People seeing it, and we drawing all this traffic in the town, we're paying people for bringing, you know, the hot funds and whatever to bring people to town. I think the main roads need to be a priority, so we get them right, and then we can branch out to others down the line. And I would say ten on that, because like you say, you got six to eight houses, no, hardly know any traffic versus Mary Street by the school where you got buses and different people coming in in town.
There's a good point of about, uh, when people come, like especially when a new family came in, this, the streets around the schools, especially the high school, intermediate.
People are looking to come.
Yeah, if they, if they see nice streets, they're like, hey, man, this is a good street, or, you know, it won't be like you said, like.
Especially with all the development, you know, there's so many people asking about Rockdale and trying to figure out what's going on in Rockdale and, you know, I'm having people from out of town asking about the school and the city and what it's like, you know, and so if we're trying to attract these higher-end or, you know, uh well-off people or hardworking people, you know, we got, I think we need to work on the, the main roads that they actually travel on.
For the ones that weren't here, we started on this project, we were identifying corridors and traffic to pedestrian interface, which means it's a dangerous street and what streets need sidewalk. We, we started on that, we had to cool our heels until we got the master plan, now we're trying to do what the master plan suggested. For me, I'm analytical by nature, I would say, I'd kinda like to see how old each street. You know, when was the last time it was rebuilt or, or stuff like that? But I don't wanna bog down on, on that, I just think it would've been, to me, useful information, but by skewing the numbers slightly, we can de-prioritize this street.
Well, that, that's kinda the intention with this, Alamo's a good example.
With the ten years.
Alamo is a good example of this, in my opinion, because Alamo's not gonna be a priority, um because it's just such a small impact that you would, maybe it's a really bad street, and that, that's the reason this section exists, is so that you can have some separation in your scoring of it's not a priority to us, even though it's a bad street and we understand it needs to be fixed, it's just not a priority at the moment, because we have a lot of other bad streets that need to be fixed.
And we haven't had any complaints, anybody falling or anything on that street particularly?
If we did, I haven't seen any of them, uh but I'm also not the person to deal with street complaints.
You also gotta take in consideration, how long would it take to do Mary Street if that was the street, you know what I'm saying, like, I don't know exactly how long it takes to, and then that's a main street for people having to travel, so.
Well, and if I'm, if I'm interpreting this right, the upper portion tells you how bad it is, and also what it's gonna ca- How bad it is, and also what it's gonna cost to repair it compared to other streets. If base failures and stuff like that are much more expensive than chip seal or, or what have you.
Right.
Right.
And then down here, this bottom section gives us a way to rate it in importance, right, I mean.
Right, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's exactly the point, you know, you could have, um, a very poor street and. The cost doesn't make sense to the impact that it has at the moment compared to other streets, or the traffic impact. Makes you realize that, man, this really isn't a priority, cause we have a lot higher impact streets that need to be done first. You know, that's just kinda the idea, you know, just cause you say ten years, doesn't mean it's gonna wait ten years. It's just an idea of, of, of how long do you think it can wait, kinda thing? You know, and you could say none of them can wait ten years, that's perfectly fine, it's just one of those, it's just a gauge, just a gauge of what you think.
I like what you said, it don't have to wait to ten years, because with all this. People coming in and there's new money coming in, we might get more grants with more money and more crews to move a lot faster than what.
You could, that, that's exactly the point, you could, you could get a lot of developments that come in that help you start updating your streets. Um, or development, I'll use the example of what Republic Ridge was gonna do, they were gonna, um, improve part of Belton. I mean, if, just cause you rated that street, maybe you rated it as ten plus years, the developer's gonna come in and repair it then and there, we're not gonna tell them, hey, man. Planning commission said ten plus years, you can't touch this street, how about this other street?
Right.
So, and so it's just an idea, that's all it is.
So I think Alamo gets one, one, one on the personal side.
Okay.
Don't you live on Alamo, do you?
I had tried to separate my mind from thinking of who lives where.
I was, I was gonna suggest, is there a councilman living on this street?
Well, it's one of those things too, it's, it's so short and so close to the other main roads that it's.
Okay, if you'll like make that full page now.
Adjustable, even if you do.
Right, you do have to.
Can almost avoid it.
You can, yeah, you can practically avoid it.
Okay, well, last one we'll do today, and then you'll have a good under your belt.
You scared one commissioner off when you said we're gonna do twenty-five streets today.
He'll come back. So, this is a good example of us to work on something, so you, you have an idea of what we're gonna be doing in the future? Um, I don't know why they did that, um, if you scroll up a little bit.
Right, like move to front.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Should have a move to. There you go.
Oh, no, I lied.
It might just be messed up, cause it, it's fine, um, y'all know where Alcoa is, we can show you if it's not, Alcoa is actually, it, it would be a collector. Uh, getting into that terminology, there it is, you see a lot of locals go into that, which. They feed and then they go to Alcoa, which Alcoa kinda takes you to Murray, which is another collector, so on. Um, if you scroll up a little bit, Shannon, we'll get into this grading, so remember the reds is the failures of what I identified. Orange is pores, and then the yellow is average. Um, what we thought on these is, there's, it's about fifty-fifty on poor and failure. Um, so if we go to the first one hundred block, which is the eleven hundred you see right there. I made the remarks that there's more patching on there than surface, there's a lot of potholes, they have surface loss, they have rutting. And then they have a sidewalk on a part of the road, so I just notated that. Um, and then as you get to the twelve hundred to seventeen hundred block, it becomes poor instead of failing. They have some edge failure.
I'm sorry, where is that, east-west, oh Murray?
If I can recall.
I mean, Alcoa, I'm sorry.
Alcoa, um, east is your eleven hundred block, and then as you go west, it goes up. If I can recall correctly, of how that goes. It's, it's right above you, if you just drag it up a little bit. The other way, it's right there.
So according to what you have up there, what's the number of blocks needing attention?
Uh, I'd have to pull the spreadsheet, give me just a second.
Okay.
You gotta click and drag it. You're talking about, you just gotta click the guy and drag him up to Alcoa. And you just gotta drop him. And then it kinda tells you the hundred block right there, um. If you go back to the spreadsheet real quick, to answer Doug's question. Yeah, um, so we have. Looks like we have eleven blocks. Um. With five of those being failure, five of those being poor, and then one being average in those blocks. Um, a lot of the comments are the same, I mean, we can go by a hundred by a hundred block if you want to. Um, but there's some surface loss pretty much throughout the street, edge feathering, they have alligator cracking and some pretty bad patchwork. And then, if they had a really poor intersection of, as far as the condition, we tried to write it in there to let you know. So the intersection with metal was in pretty bad condition, so we wrote it down.
But we don't do an averaging thing, if you said fourteen blocks need attention, seven of them, the average comes up.
Yeah, so this is the start of Alcoa, I'll just, we'll just show you a couple of pictures and, and you can keep going, Shannon, we'll just go through them quick. Um, then this is when it started becoming poorer, it wasn't too bad, I mean, you see some, some alligator cracking with some pretty poor patching to cover that. Um, that's the thirteen hundred block, the fourteen hundred block is the average block, it wasn't, there wasn't too much cracking within it. There's some edge feathering that you can see right around there. Um, and then it goes back down to poor, as you can see, there's a lot of surface loss, you can kinda tell. In this grainy, when it starts to look like that, it's when you start getting a lot of surface loss. And it just kinda remains the same throughout, I think, the seven hundred block, this is when we said it starts to get to failure, cause you see a lot of the alligator cracking that you can kinda tell right here. It's hard to see with the shadow, but you can see the patchwork, all these, all these patches to fill potholes.
Are they showing? Is that surface deterioration causing the pothole, or do we have a base?
Potholes can be from a lot of different things, it's not a specific indicator, it's not like an alligator cracking, like when you have alligator cracking, you know you have base failure. It's not like that, you can have a pothole because you, the surface loss eroded enough to where you had a weak surface and then it just. Created a pothole, or you could have a two-large-sized load vehicle come through. And create what's called a bulge, um, it's essentially when it shifts the pavement, and that can create a pothole in the, when you fix that kinda thing. So there's, it's different things that can happen resulting that, um, but again.
Considered significant traffic bearing, or, um.
Well, if you're, I, in our discussion previously, if you remember, um, the scaling is like scaled based off of your community has like highways through it and stuff. That's, that's kinda how Barbara started, so I kept it, um, so it has low. You know, really for our streets, it would probably be more of a moderate to moderate high, to be quite honest with you. But on the scale that we rated that, it's considered low, so, you know, we can have that discussion. Um, those are the block pictures, if we go to the spreadsheet, we can start to kinda score, and we can refer back to the pictures if you need to. Um, but this is a good one to practice on before we leave. So the first question, is the street overall, if you remember, I said about half of them are failing, half of them are poor, and then there's one average, in my opinion. Um, what, how would you assess that, do you agree with that assessment? Do you think that it would be a poor street, a moderate street, a failure street, or great or excellent?
And this is grading the whole?
This is the whole street, and then we'll go over the blocks of what you think the, um. The overall rating of the blocks would be.
Yes, I'd say failure on the condition of the street.
The condition of the street, you said what?
The overall.
Yeah, overall, street might be five, failure.
But some of it looked.
I mean, yeah, there's certain sections that actually.
Well, and that's kinda where the block by block comes in, you know, maybe the whole street is, is pretty poor. But up by a block by block basis, you have some pretty good blocks in there, so it's not as bad, you know, that's kinda where that discretion comes in, it's why I put it in there like that. Um, so are we comfortable with the street being failure or poor for the overall street?
I, I think poor for the overall, and then once we get to the block by block, we.
What did you say, man?
So for the overall street, do we think it's a failing street or poor?
You recommend?
I put it half and half, I had half of it as poor and half of it as failing, and then one average, I think when I averaged it out, I put it as poor. Because of the average brought it up a little bit, but it really could go either way. So we'll do poor on that, and then on a, on a, um, block by block basis. Um, are the block conditions poor as well? You know, cause you had some that were in pretty bad shape, but you had some that weren't in really bad shape, so it's, you know.
Right.
I think if they weed eat them sidewalks, it'd be looking nice, and blow some leaves off of it.
We need to get a home of code enforcement, get them out there.
No junkie apple seed went out and planted apples everywhere, it's Charlie, you know. Leaf blowing could be your calling, man.
Right, yeah.
It paying up, I don't mind.
And it's about to be real busy this season, it's about to be fall, so you're about to make a killing if you're gonna do that.
Did it this morning?
One thing, I'm not gonna miss these leaves this year, I'm, I'm not gonna have leaves out my house for a while.
I, uh, I almost lean towards moderate, but if you said poor, I'd, I'd accept poor on that.
Which wa- which way does the commission lean?
I think poor.
What, poor, three?
Yeah, four.
We're at four.
Alright, so as far as the surface condition, off of the pictures that you saw and the comments of the different type of patric cracking, surface loss. How would you rate that?
Um.
That, that, that is so hard to average, because it's got bad spots and some that are.
Well, and that's kind of.
Normal for Rockdale.
They got an alligator that's pretty bad, that's like one of the worst, right?
Well, what I'll tell you as far as the way that, the reason that the scoring came out so bad as it did is. We averaged it based on what a normal street is, not what a normal Rockdale street is.
Ah.
So, just keep that in mind, that's.
That information would have been.
Say that one more time.
So, when we did this analysis, we graded the streets based on what a traditional street should be, not what your community has.
Oh.
So we didn't do a scaling of saying, we have a hundred and forty-two streets, and we're only gonna give out so many failures, we're only gonna give out so many pores, because it's all on a scale. We just said, a street is a street, there's a certain way it's supposed to be constructed, if it's not constructed to that standard, then it's gonna be graded lower than that. That's how we did it.
So we're under surface condition?
Right, and so, the surface condition, I, you know, I give an example, the surface on this street's kinda bad. So it could be one of those that, you know, your base may not be that bad, but your surface is really bad, so you can say a failing for a surface and not that bad for base or vice versa. You know, just cause you say poor, the reason I'm telling you this, just cause you say poor on the first two, doesn't mean you can't go back to failure on certain items. Just keep that in mind, I mean, you're, you're not locking yourself out of anything.
That, that may be a failure without an alligator.
There is some pretty rough sections in here, um, on some other one hundred blocks as well. That the surface, there was a lot of really bad patchwork on this street, if I can recall.
I, I, I lean towards poor on it myself, but.
Four.
Four, yeah, four.
Just out of curiosity, what, who, can you tell us, or are you able to tell us what the excellent streets were?
Um.
Cornerstone? Well, no, if you were talking.
Well, yeah, but he's, he's talking about, we had, we had three. It was O'Kelly, uh, they redid, right when we did this is when they redid O'Kelly's, um, a couple hundred blocks on O'Kelly. And so it was, um, excellent, if I can recall, those were the three.
It was three of them, right?
Yeah, it's, but it was a hundred blocks, it wasn't streets, so like, if you, if we go back to the streets, there was not a single excellent street, because there's more one hundred blocks of O'Kelly that weren't that good. So it brought the average down, but those one hundred blocks were excellent, so there was three hundred blocks.
Was there a pretty big gap between the excellent and, um, poor or failure in the rest of the streets?
Oh, there can be.
Um, as far as the standard of them, yes, and, and excellent street, the way we graded it would be pretty much a brand-new street. That would be very new within their life cycle, a good street, there's not as much separation. Um, and then average, you know, it, it starts to get a little bit less, but as far as, a failure is a long way. From average, just like excellent's a long way from average, but the ones in between kinda bring it back, if that.
So if you have a perfect surface, but that doesn't have curbs, that takes it out of excellent, correct?
No.
No.
We didn't, we didn't, um, hurt them, cause they didn't have curbs, um. We just noted it down, because if you wanted to start installing curbs at some point, and then you would know where you had to install curbs at, so on so forth. That was just miscellaneous info that Tim asked for.
So number four is base condition?
Yes, so the base condition of Alcoa, what do you think, um, it has alligator cracking in it, so you know they have some base failure at some point, somewhere along the line. Um, but not every one hundred block had alligator cracking.
Right.
For that reason, I give it a poor.
Okay.
Four.
When you. Traffic impact?
When you do the hundred blocks, um. If one said a couple hundred blocks are in great condition, and of course you got the couple hundred, maybe could be next to them or further down. They're in poor or failure, you, you'd have to redo the whole street regardless, right, or can you just do sections of?
No, you can do sections, yeah, it, depending on the, uh, condition, um. You'd most likely do it all, I mean, as far as, um, from a block length, you know, from, um, Alcoa between, um. Two other crossroads, you'd just do that block, usually you wouldn't stop within the middle of it, but you could if you wanted to. Very rarely will you ever do the whole street, especially these longer streets, you'll usually break them out, so you'll do, um, the twelve hundred block through this. Fifteen hundred block, or wha- whatever was failure, you'd probably do those first, and then you would do the poor later on, just however it falls.
On the traffic impact?
Traffic impact, we had it as low, but remember, this is a collector road, so it's gonna be one of your more higher trafficked roads, most likely.
I'm between minor and moderate.
I would agree with that.
Somebody give me a number, what do y'all think, moderate or minor?
Well, minor's around, what, two fifty a day is what we're saying?
Uh, minor's around two fifty.
Moderate is?
Moderate would be a little bit over two fifty, somewhere around, um, let's see.
Three hundred?
Yeah, moderate, moderate's somewhere around probably three hundred to fifteen hundred, most likely. It's like a big one, a moderate's just kind of a catchall, is what I would more rate.
I'd probably say minor, two fifty, I'm not. What would you think?
Um, I would probably go moderate.
I was gonna say, I think moderate, I just think of that one side of Alcoa where the.
Yeah, cause you, yeah, you have a lot of people that feed off on, from Alcoa, cause you have Razzas in that area, and then you have a park in that location, I mean, you're gonna have.
I'm okay with moderate.
You have some items that cause some traffic.
Go around the, what do we got?
Moderate.
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 Okay, um, if we'll go back to the spreadsheet real quick, this question's the number of blocks that you think need attention, um, desperately. I'll tell you, I don't know if you wanna count poor in that or not, as far as failures, we listed five of them, if you wanna add poor into it, then it's ten of them. Um, it's your discretion, you know, you can go from there, that's just what staff had it as.
Say it again.
We had five failure, five poor, one, one average.
Yeah, might as well go with.
So on the, um, on the questionnaire that we're filling out, it asks, um, how many of them do you think need attention? Like desperately kinda thing, and there's a nine-plus one that's five points that I think might fit this one, but if you don't think all of them need it, then we can go lower.
I'm good with five.
Five.
Okay, and then the environment, um, again, remember, all this is asking you is what's around there, so for this, it's still just single family. Um, now you have more single-family homes, because it's a collector, so you could get away with saying it's, um. Light density, I don't, I don't know if I would go medium density, but you can if you want to. Um, I definitely wouldn't go minimal, cause minimal, you, you said Alcoa was minimal, so it wouldn't really, I mean, you said Alamo was minimal, so it wouldn't make sense to say.
More than Alamo, so.
Yeah.
Definitely. I almost think medium density.
I'm leaning towards medium density as well.
You have an opinion?
Well, we're already at an average of four, so we might as well just, there's no halfway points in there, so I'd go with four then.
Okay, um, we're almost done, I promise. Well, on the importance of repair, of, you know, if in a perfect world, um, that's reasonable. How fast would the, do you think this needs to turn around and get repaired? Do you think it needs to be done in the next one to two years as a really high priority street, or can it be done in three to four, five to seven? Or so on, what, what do you guys think is a, is a fair assessment? I know that's a hard question, but i- i- this really is just a, kind of a temperature of what, what, how important is.
Not knowing the, a- and I'm not sure where that location is where we're thinking base failure. It almost looks like the end of the street.
Well, that one's the end of the street, if you go to the spreadsheet, Shannon, this one's. Well, that one's the end of the street, if you go to the spreadsheet, Shannon, this one's, you see, when it gets towards the end, um. There's base failure again, there's there's base failure, essentially from eighteen hundred to twenty-one hundred, um, if you wanna go on the picture one and scroll down a little bit.
There's only one driveway past that, like with that picture there, right?
I think, yeah, that's what I, that's why.
Uh, so keep one more, one more, this one, so this is where I say it starts getting to failure, um, keeps going down a little bit. You just, you start getting really bad patchwork and really old pavement is why I said that. Um, such a lot of ser- a lot of surface loss right there. And then bad patchwork, cracking, I mean, it's just, it's just old pavement, so.
So can we rate a couple of the blocks as? Uh, like a five or four and the rest could be longer.
Well, we're doing it as a street as a whole, unfortunately.
Well, that that gets me at a two point five, I I I'm on the fence between two and in, between eight years and. Five to seven years, but.
I was at five to seven years.
I think I'm gonna go five to seven.
Three.
Okay. As far as the cost, we don't have the spreadsheet pulled up to give you the cost, um, but you're talking about a lot of, um. Base repair, you know, what I would say though to keep in mind on your cost estimates is the more that you can do together, the better the price is gonna be.
Yeah.
So like on a street like this, it's not gonna be too bad of a cost, it's gonna be a high cost, don't get me wrong, but as far as the. Value of what you're getting, it's not a bad deal.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I think on the other one, y'all just kept it a three on moderate, cuz y'all y'all did five to seven, I think y'all just.
Yeah, I'm getting in the middle of the road on all this voting, but yeah, I agree that it's three. Joan?
Yes.
Last question and then we're done for the day is your personal priority, you know, you can do better than a three if you want to, this is just, this is all personal, you know. Did it need to be done a long time ago, but you can, it can still wait five to seven years even though it needed to be done a long time ago.
Well, it meets the Rockdale standard.
Uh, I think, I think middle of the list is a good place for this one, pending, um, seeing some of the worst ones y'all teased.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we will get the, y'all will get very familiar with this, I promise, and then, um, we'll go back and look at it.
To put things into perspective, maybe looking at what you think is the worst one at at the beginning of the workshop.
Do you have, does that keep a total? Can we compare to the one we just did to this one's total?
Um, we didn't add them up, we just highlighted them, I'm gonna go add them up later. And but I I will, I'll keep updating it, so when we do this in the future, these sheets are gonna be saved, so if y'all wanna say, man, this is really similar to Alamo. What did we rate Alamo, we can pull up.
Just curious, I would.
Yeah, we, all this is gonna be saved, it's it's a living document, cuz I know this is, uh, trust me, I I went through this for. Eight months, six months, so I I I know what you're about to start getting into and it's, and you're gonna. Learn a lot more about streets than you want to know.
Well, we'll definitely have to up our speed over two. If we're gonna hit February deadline, well, we know, we already know we're gonna have to hit.
Well, I say just plan for workshops from here on out, I hate to do that to you, I'm not gonna try to make you come here on December workshop, so just keep that in mind cuz that is the holidays. But every other workshop, we'll probably have one to get this going, um, but we'll be faster, the more we do this, the faster we're gonna be.
Hit forty of them.
Yeah, I mean, we're we'll 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 be fast.
Can we leave this in our notebook?
Yes, leave that there, that's your reference, um, I will do what. Mr. Higden said, I will show y'all some of the worst ones on a PowerPoint, so y'all can see, um, the differences. And then you can, uh, know what you're comparing to, I guess, of if it's really that bad or if it's not that bad.
We don't have perfect streets out there, we already, they've already came in and done some, uh, crack sealing.
I was gonna tell you, they've already gone in there and tarred in a lot of cracks already and that's two year old streets, so. But they also put it down on broad end soil, so that's kinda to be expected, but. It's amazing, it's amazing if you go back and look at what they did.
Yeah, that's still around.
Accounted for drainage and, you know, all that kinda stuff.
Y'all have a great rest of the day, see y'all next time.
I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting, uh, close, I got three twenty-one according to the clock here. Meeting adjourned.